Speak to the fact that if you have ninety-degree parking and you have to have a twenty-four-foot driving aisle, nineteen-foot stalls and nineteen-foot stalls. So that it's sixty-two feet of paving width to have a double row of parking. So if you were doing that, you would have to put the parking beside the east side of the building, you would have to have sixty-two-foot width of paving to have two rows of stalls on either side of a twenty-four-foot driving aisle.
Almost twice as wide as Highland is coming down.
Yes. You'd have sixty-two feet of paving.
So even though it's oriented north-south, it still takes up a lot of space east-west?
The parking lot would most likely be, have sixty-two feet east to west that it would occupy to have the double row of parking.
And, you know, a little nuance, could it be specified that the first stall doesn't start until so many feet in, or there may already be a rule, I don't know?
There is a, a rule to that effect, but it, the, the minimum buffer is, is five feet. So you have to have, you have to have a landscape buffer at least five feet in width between the property line and where the paving starts. And that landscape buffer would consist of low-growing shrubs and trees.
But, and that could be increased, but the minimum is five?
The minimum is five, but it could be increased. But if you're looking at thirty parking spaces, you're, you're, depending on how or where you, you locate that, you're, you're looking at getting fifteen stalls on either side of a driving aisle, so.
I'd like a ten-foot buffer. I mean, as far as protecting the view from the, from Republic, or from the north. I don't know how many feet down the block is, but it looks like you could get fifteen on either side.
If it's helpful, I think Mr. Richardson's willing to speak to some of the parking questions, or at least speak to the topic, maybe?
Somebody, please. Beat this to death. Let's see if we can-
Brian Richardson, three sixty-one Northmore. The, I think the plan, coming out of Planning Commission, we made the changes so that we could actually get it on a forty-four-foot wide, so running as you guys are talking, moving that curb cut on the north a little bit farther east so we can get a straight shot over to Beloit. We would be at twenty-foot for parking, twenty-four for drive-through, which gives us the forty-four. The lots are fifty feet wide, so we'll have a buffer to the east. That will allow us to basically not then encroach on that sand.
Getting busy.
So we would end up being able to keep parking clear back here, because we can get a row of parking on this, and then we only need single parking to go the rest of the direction to get the thirty cars that we need. And then we're going to be a little wider in the middle, which will allow the trash truck services to come in here and get that, so it's hidden behind the building, and it's not sticking out in the front. So we end up with one row of parking all the way through, another row of parking here, but we're back at this instead of building clear up here.
That's very helpful for me. Thank you.
So that would be the current plan now, and that would not require us to make any recommendations?
That's what we have in our planning commission that we agreed to do.
Okay. Thank you. So then, my major request would be that we specify the Phase Two as PDDR1, so we don't have to visit this again five years from now.
We need to take care of the, the future land use designation first.
Do that first, yeah. All right, well, I'll get that part started. Mayor Hoppick, I move that we concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Probably don't, there's probably a better official reading for this. Uh, bear with me. Yeah, I guess there isn't. We concur with the recommendation of Planning Commission to approve ordinance number twenty-dash-one-one-zero-two-seven, amending the future land use designation of this two-point-zero-four acre tract of land from public, semi-public to urban residential on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission approving ordinance number two-zero-dash-one-one-zero-two-seven-seven, amending the future land use designation to public, semi-public to urban residential. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero.
Commissioners, I don't want to get ahead of you, I don't know, if there's more conditions, you certainly need to articulate those, but a, as a possibility, I think you could approve the ordinance on first reading, provided that the legal description is amended such that the eastern six lots are described separately to be R1PDD, and adding a condition that parking shall be installed in the configuration in, in the attached exhibit, which would have to be prepared and attached by second reading. But I don't know if those are all your concerns, but the two that I've heard, that might be a way to address them between first and second reading.
Would you repeat those?
Instruct staff to prepare an amended description, separating out the east half, or east-six lots to be designated as R1PDD, and then adding a condition that the parking shall be configured as depicted on the attached exhibit, knowing the exhibit will have to be prepared and attached by second reading.
I just had one question, it was related to a suggestion that you had earlier, in terms of limiting the driveway access for, in the future development, in terms of adding more driveway egress on residence.
Well, that's why you do a PDD, because that has to be addressed.
My concern there is if, if it is, it is R1, and they're single-family houses along, then we've got three driveways, three more driveways we're putting on on Beloit, and I'm not, I'm not convinced that R1PDD is what we should do right now. I like, I actually like the concept I saw in our packet, and I have no idea if it's possible of having four duplexes with interior access through the same access as we, we get here. Now, I don't know whether that works at all or not, but it was a nice drawing, you know?
Well, and the, the PDD, it still has to come before the Planning Commission and the, and the City Commission, so whether it's PDDR2 or R1, I'm, R2 gives you more flexibility.
I'm not sure if I'm on board with that. I'm not sure what we gain by it, I guess.
Are duplexes considered single-family?
They are not. They would be, they would be multifamily if that was the approach taken. The, but the condition right now is that they are, with the PDD as it is now, is that there would be up to six single-family homes, so that would need to be changed at some point in the future if they wanted to do that. I, I guess I just don't know what, what we gain by going to an R1 as opposed to an R2.
Would there be differences?
One if PDD says, well, the PDD specification says, single-family residences already.
Well, then, what's the functional difference between those two?
The main difference is, explained, and Commissioner Hodges observed, is that it's, it's more, if someone was looking at a zoning map, showing that on a map as PDDR1 would be more, it would convey something clearer to people than if, if you saw PDDR2. R2 would imply one or two family dwellings, then you'd have to dig deeper to see the actual ordinance that's in fact limited to one dwelling. So the, the advantage of, of making the eastern portion, planned development district R1, is then it's crystal clear to everyone that it's limited to a single family. It wasn't, it wasn't laziness that, that compelled it to be PDDR2 all over, it was just the fact that the Planning Commission was wrestling about whether to allow duplexes in Phase Two or not, and R2 was needed for duplexes, but they came down to limiting it to single-family dwellings. But as Mr. Franz indicated, it's not necessary, but what the R, PDDR1 does is it conveys to the public or anybody looking at a map that they know, if I own a lot on Santa Fe and I'm looking at a zoning map, I know what R1 means.
And that doesn't preclude ten years from now, someone coming requesting it be, be changed?
By the advantage, as Commissioner Hodges pointed out, is that someone who's looking, and they look at a zoning map, and it says PDDR1, they know exactly what that means. If it says PDDR2, it's subject to interpretation.
Right, that's what I thought you'd, you'd say.
So it's a matter of clarity?
It's just a matter of clarity.
And, and should, should someone in the future want to go in and say, change it from single-family to duplexes, they would then go through the process of amending the PDD and amending the zoning to R2PDD with a new set of conditions?
And we'd be in a setting just like we are this evening.
And in terms of precluding, without further detail, it's going to require what units described in terms of coming back with an amendment regardless.
Okay.
Because the need to be detailed.
Then I retract my objection to an R1PDD, it's, you know.
And let me just say this in, in support of that. I, I mean, I think that neighbors are very justified to be skeptical and not supportive of, of this development, and, and I think our main responsibility is to see that when we are promoting and feel that it's not done to the detriment of those who are there already. And I'm not wild about this, but I, I can come to grips better with it if we at least have that R1PDD setting up at least what our expect, expectations are in the moment right now. Whether that changes, with the understanding that it can change in the future.
So Commissioner Davis, would you like to change your motion?
Well, there hasn't been a motion made yet.
Oh, there's not a motion on it, okay.
I'll make one, but, yes.
I thought he'd, I thought he'd already stepped forward with that.
Well, I was writing stuff down, but I'll, I'll throw it out, and feel free to change it. Mr. Mayor, I move that we concur with the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission ordinance number twenty-dash-one-one-zero-three-zero, rezoning this two-point-zero-four acre tract of land to PDDR2, and instruct staff to amend the description of the eastern portion of this property to R1PDD, and adding
Updated.
Adding an updated parking exhibit, uh, to be, as an attached exhibit when this returns for second reading. And if there was a request for a ten-foot buffer, would that be added in here now?
If, if that's your desire, yes, I'd suggest you do it now.
And if not, feel free to amend it, and with a ten-foot buffer from Republic Streets South to the beginning of the parking stalls.
Second.
Okay, you're going to tell me where's the buffer at?
Between the sidewalk on Republic and the first parking stall. Right there, yeah.
Just saying, along the curb line of the street.
Correct.
Yeah. So if there's maybe a little screening or something that could be done there.
Okay, let's see if I can get this. We have a motion and a second to concur with the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission ordinance number two-zero-one-one-zero-three-zero, rezoning the two-point-zero-four acre tract of land to PDDR2 on the proposed first phase, and PDDR1 on the future development being the east portion of the plat, or the plat, along with an updated parking exhibit to be attached, and a ten-foot buffer along the parking lot facing Republic Avenue. Does that get it?
Just to clarify, you would be approving on first reading, approving the statements on first reading?
Right, on first reading. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five-zero. Okay, I think we still have a executive session, so.
We do have, uh, one other, other business.
Other business, okay.
Yeah, I would like to instruct staff to repeat the conflict of interest education for the Planning Commission, not waiting until September, primarily because they're going to hear more cases between now and September. Analogous to our having to go to a Cora Coma meeting in between the time that we would normally have done it.
I, I like that idea.
We change out a big portion of that in August, so you're, I'm not sure we can get that done before.
Well, well, let me-
Yeah, we lose four commissioners that come on in September.
Of any commissioner who is continuing on. I mean, it won't, I mean, we're talking an hour, it won't hurt them to sit through an hour, even if they're leaving, but certainly for the commissioners who are, whose terms are not expiring in next month.
So, I think as Dean mentioned, Lauren Driscoll, Director of Community and Development Services, in September, we hold this training. We cannot mandate a commissioner to show up to anything. I mean, we, we tell them in advance, we encourage it. I can, between now and then, make sure that we talk about the ethics policy, just under maybe other business, make sure they have a copy of it. We always provide a copy in September when we do that training.
And I understand the frustrating place you're in, because you can't mandate that. But we can, can't we? As a condition of service on the board? I mean, because Mr. Olson, obviously, for whatever reason, didn't attend last September, so therefore he's going a whole additional, additional calendar year not having the materials he needs to do his job successfully and effectively. So, I mean, on certain boards, I think it's, I, I'd be interested in talking about making it a requirement to get your board orientation that includes going over our ethics policy before you sit up here and start making decisions about other people's lives, especially Planning Commission.
And we could narrow it down to any commissioner who was not present for the instruction last September.
Well, I could double-check too. So, E, roughly quarterly, for commissioners that come in off-schedule, we also provide, like, a sandwich lunch and have them come in, introduce them to their appropriate staff members, let them know about our protocols, about how to get your packets, and then we do do a slide that's probably like twenty slides long, and, you know, there's a couple of them in there that said, you know, be aware that parliamentary procedure is a key to being a part of this, you know, we have ethics, those types of things. So at least they're even touched on in that brief component, and we do provide, again, a copy of the ethics materials then, too. And I could check to see if he sat in one of those post-September, sometimes if they've missed something, they can, but I, I just-
I have no problem leaving it up to the two of you to decide how you do it, but just make sure it's done before he sits in front of another case, because he obviously didn't understand it the first time.
So, Mr. Manager, I mean, do we have to have formal recommendation from the mayor that that's, since they're his appointees?
Yeah, I think we need a motion and a vote to make sure it's representative of the governing body's direction. The, one practical thing, the Planning Commission is meeting once a month, and so they'll meet, uh, which day in August?
August fourth.
So they'll meet August fourth, and then they'll meet again, their next meeting will be in September, and so we will have to conduct the training in September for the new commissioners that will need to be appointed. So we'll be conducting the training August and then again in September.
But that would be after the September, I forget which day you said, but after-
So their September meeting will be their annual business meeting.
So that would be August and September.
And if we conduct it in August, we don't catch the new appointees, so we'll be conducting the same training two months in a row.
So the new appointees will be there for the September meeting.
I'm sorry?
The new appointees would be there for the September meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, all the, well, all the commissioners that attend would be there for the September meeting.
I mean, they should be, yes. I mean, I mean, we, if you'd like, I mean, we could try and push it off till October, but again, like, trying to force them to be there, or mandating that you be at this meeting, what we do is, I've got it marked on our calendar, I think, what, two weeks from now, you do new round of board appointments, and like I said, it's in August. So as soon as that list comes out, we get that contact, they'll get their standard letter from the clerk's office, but we usually try to get ahead of that, particularly for this August one, because we know we've got a September meeting, to reach out to them, let them know that they've been appointed, please see this, and-
But for the commissioner who missed it last September, he owes you this education anyway. So he's, he's eleven months late, he's not getting it a month early.
Right.
So he, he's, he's still has not satisfied last year's requirement, because he missed the edu, the training then. So I'm just saying, bring him up to date.
So what I hear the board saying, or the commission saying, is that you would like us to pull that particular commissioner aside and make sure he gets ethics training?
Yes, ma'am.
Prior to his next attending a meeting.
Just to be clear, we're going to need that as a motion and a second and a vote, and I have a question for legal counsel, whether we have the authority to do that.
Should we hear that first, then?
Well, you certainly have the ultimate, obviously you have the appointment role and the ultimate removal capability, should that be necessary. It would be unprecedented, but the logistical questions may affect that. Am I correct that the, on the annual meeting, you'll have the newly-seated Planning Commission, and am I, am I remembering, or would the plan be that that would be in a study session format ahead of the actual meeting, so that if they had matters for consideration, they would have had that training?
Yes, we essentially do a pre-study session, so just like you guys meet at two, and then you officially start your meeting at four, we would then have them meet early, go through this standardized training that we provide, that I think Dean talked about, goes over ethics, parliamentary procedure, all these kind of, some of the legal components of being a Planning Commissioner, and then they have their annual meeting. So they'll have had that training before they go into that meeting, which they elect officers and some of those other-
And it can be as simple as, the conflict of interest, what is it, eight, nine pages, maybe? And just email it, read this, please. And at least some attempt's been made to make sure that he has officially seen it.
Well, and I think maybe that's where Mr. Skreg is getting down to, a specific resolution, since I don't have something right now to say thou shall do, is having that direction from you, that an email is enough, or that Mr. Bankston and I need to sit down and have a coaching session, or that I need to hold a public meeting in which we provide this training, again, the kind of level of what we're hoping to accomplish, and I think you've indicated timeline of before their next August business meeting is clear.
Well, that's August fourth, you said, is when they meet.
Yes.
So that's next Thursday, is it right?
Next Tuesday.
Right, I'm just saying, you know, there, there's an eight-page doc, I mean, he's going to read a hundred-and-fifty pages for his meeting, so we're adding eight pages to it, most of which he probably knows already, but just so that officially we, we know that he's seen it.
Do we need a motion just to send the ethics policy out with the packet?
Well, I was, I was going to ask one other logistical question, if I may, if, Mr. Davis, are, are you speaking specifically of Planning Commissioner Olson in your reference to him?
Or unless there's someone else who missed the meeting.
Well, the reason I ask that, in anticipation of my conversation with him, I forwarded a full copy of the ethics policy and the Planning Commission policy, so, and we talked, now, I realize there are, there's more to that than just the conflict of interest sections, but we did, we did review those in, in some detail.
If-
No, I don't want to, you know, he may, he may invite the opportunity to have further conversation with staff.
Right, but, but something like, that's what satisfies my, satisfies my desire that he certainly has been given the opportunity to have it in front of him and, and read it.
If your, if your desire is for city staff to ensure that he has it, and request that he reviews it before he participates further, I'm comfortable doing that at the staff level. If you, if your intention is to preclude him from participating in future Planning Commission meetings until he meets some other standard, then we need to be more clear about the standard, and I'd like that to come from the governing body.
Your, your first option would satisfy my, my request.
But I think it does, but I think it does kind of move, and this is obviously ten-twenty-five at night is not the time to, to have this particular discussion, but I think we need to have it in the very near future, that with certain boards, the imperative to know that backwards and forwards is so great, that I think it needs to be a condition upon their act of participation in a board, is that they've, they've gone through the training, so that the burden falls on us and it doesn't fall on Ms. Driscoll, who's saying, you have to do this, and, and, and she really doesn't have any authority or power behind her to ensure that that happens.
Recognizing that concern and desire, the model that I've been trying to build is something that is not in-person instruction, that if they miss it, or they've missed the opportunity, trying to create something that is instructional, that puts the burden on each member, they review it, they confirm to us they've reviewed it, and so the burden is on them, and we have some confirmation that they've done that. With this attendance problem that we've had for years, we can conduct the training, but we don't get anything close to the saturation that we need. And it's a matter of convenience, it's a matter of attendance, and we're not able to repeat it enough to get to the level that we want. That's why I'm trying to change the model.
Right, because tonight we witnessed what happens when that falls through, then you have mistrust in a public board, which then-
Completely understand, I'm completely comfortable conveying the frustration, the concern, how much conversation we had at the staff level. If it, if the expectation is beyond that, then I think the governing body needs to take action.
And we already do beyond that. Like, it's, it's, Dean and I are both very aware of how important, and I completely agree with you, Commissioner Hodges, how important it is for them to have this training that we take and go above and beyond, and we asked Mr. Bankston to come in quite often to, to do that meeting with us, and we have PowerPoints that we have developed over the years to make sure they get that, rather than waiting for something to come out, because we know that it's hard for them to do the hard work of making these decisions without that information. But I think it's really imperative, and I think one of the things I've taken away from this event is, anyone who's put on these boards and commissions really needs to be aware of the independent expectation they have to share information in a timely manner, and that we can't do a complete background check on everybody. If you're not telling us something, we can't advise you or connect you to the right person. And, and I think that's, that's important for them to remember. I think sometimes it's just, well, staff will get us that, or didn't staff, now, no, if you don't tell us what your connections are, we can't possibly advise you any other way.
And just to clarify, when I said beyond that, I wasn't talking training, I just meant if your expectation was anything more than encourage, than providing the, the policy and encouraging them to review it in advance in the next meeting, if you, but I think I understand you're comfortable with that, and we can make that happen.
Right, because, you know, really the only other option for us is to, you know, issue some kind of reprimand or censure, and I think that the way Commissioner Davis is approaching it is probably a lot more positive in terms of coaching to try to achieve the behavior and compliance that, that you'd like to see as opposed to punishing. And, you know, with all due respect, obviously, you know, the way we're doing it isn't cutting it, and I think maybe Mr. Skreg touched on that with, we need to find another way of doing it, because you can't be, you can't provide seven different orientations for seven different commissioners, so, and, and if they miss the one opportunity, then we're eleven months in, and I hope he would have learned something from that, but who knows?
That was very well stated, thank you.
Okay, I think you have the-
I think I do, yes.
Okay.
If it helps at all, the next item- If it helps at all, the next item could be postponed if you like, I think we can cover it in 15 minutes or less. So whatever is your preference.
Do it, yep.
Can we have about four or five minutes? Four, so.
Okay, you wanted to delay the start by five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Couple, well. Two, how about two or three?
All right, that'll work. I move the city commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss the subject of the city's claim arising from the detection, isolation, and cleanup of asbestos materials in the basement and basement stairwell of fire station number two with the city's legal counsel, based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2. There will be a two-minute break before the start, so the open meeting will resume in this room at 10:45 PM, and possible action to follow.
Second.
Got a motion second to move into executive session for 15 minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What's on the agenda for next week? I'm hoping by tomorrow, this is at 6:00 in my future.
Okay, we are back in session, and there will, there is no action to be taken. So unless anybody has an issue, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Well, you know, we should have had some champagne for the, for the Expo Center.